Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob?
Bob, go ahead.
I wasn't, I was absent, but in the top paragraph it says I was present, so we gotta remove the president.
You were?
I was not here.
You were on injured reserve.
Yeah, yeah, so, second paragraph is right, I was not here.
Okay.
Yeah, you only attended by phone.
Yeah, later on.
Yeah, later on.
Yeah.
Anything else, Bob?
I don't know, other than, should Dick have recused himself? Did Dick made a motion, Mr. Holden made a motion to approve the SEDRAC charter as amended? Do you remember of that SEDRAC? I mean, I don't know if that's...
No, I didn't see whether there was any personal or financial gain being made with the committee, so I didn't feel there was a conflict there.
Okay. And then, on the last page, you made a motion, Mr. Holden made a motion to enter executive session with the town manager. You've got that two or three times, so I know we went into executive session without Mike one of those times.
The first.
Is that not there? It says with the town manager. One of those should say without the town manager.
Yes, it should.
I'm not sure which one.
Well, I do know that he was there for the real estate was the charter, and I do know it would have been...
Second paragraph.
The second, the personnel one.
Yeah.
So it's a board only. So that would be the fourth paragraph down on page four.
The fourth one?
Okay. Was the one for personnel. That's what we discussed.
That's what we called Bobby.
As he was, the town manager was present for the contracts one, and the present for the real estate one.
Yep.
So, yes, that would be correct, Bob. Thank you.
That's all I have. Okay. Mike?
I'm good.
Joe?
Well, we've got the yellow paragraph on the second page. I can't be certain of this, but I think I may have made that motion, the one in yellow. I don't remember who seconded the motion, if I made it.
My recollection was you made it and Mr. Holden seconded it, but I could be wrong about the second paragraph.
Would you gentlemen accept that responsibility?
Yes.
Okay.
The Lions Club request, the word auction is misspelled in the first line. In the SEDRAC charter for signing, I don't have the SEDRAC charter anymore because I gave mine to Mike, to Mike Jones. But the second bullet, the terms of the residential members shall be two-year terms. My recollection was, the point of my comment on that was that I thought it should be four-year terms like all the other terms. On the fourth bullet, I would suggest it'll read a little bit better if the word publicly appears before the word post. On the third page, fourth paragraph, the word surplus in front of assignment needs a P. And on the fourth, fourth page, it looks like the first two paragraphs are redundant. You just need one of them.
Good point.
Except that the, yeah, that's it.
Okay, any other corrections? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Citizens' comments and concerns, items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? No one there? Okay, we'll move on to appointment of person to the DRV. I believe we have a letter of interest. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Laura Sergeant to the DRV for the term of three-year, three-year term.
Wait there a second.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I don't know, when does that start? When does their three-year term start and when is it ending?
We'll have to establish that tonight.
I would say effective immediately until June 30th, 2024.
Perfect. Yeah, add that to the motion, yeah. Perfect.
Joe?
My question would be, I know we've been trying to maintain staggered terms among the appointed members of the DRV, and I just didn't know where a three-year term for Laura fit.
You know what?
I don't have, as I look at the last, I don't think they used their packet from last month, appointments around that one, I don't, I can go look at it.
Could we therefore consider approving her so that it fits into staggered terms?
Right. For a term up to three years unless that would unbalance the staggered terms of the DRV.
Okay.
So go low, if it, if it's that, if it causes a problem, go lower.
For three years, yeah.
Let's see, we had a motion, didn't we, in a second?
No.
With the corrections?
Just a...
Sure.
Quick question, do we have, what's the status of the board right now? Is there a vacancy for a full-time member, or are we just looking at alternates?
Oh, yeah, we lost Bruce. So that was, that, that position would be filled. I don't think of anybody else.
I'm pretty sure there was a vacancy.
There are, I do remember.
This would be Bruce's vacancy then?
Yeah, because the board, otherwise, I think is good.
How many members does that put on the board with her? Do they have five?
There's three on Sand Hill plus Laura. Well, I just know, I mean, you know, I'm talking, there's names-wise.
Yeah, yeah.
Dan, um, somebody else.
Pat.
Pat, yeah, and then Laura. Who else is?
With Bruce's resignation, I'm not sure there is another.
There'll be four, there's four then.
Oh, they only have four. Isn't it supposed to be an odd number, either three or five or seven, or? How does that work? I thought they always had...
I think the preferred number would be five, right?
Yeah.
So we're still short one?
We're short, I know, we, we were talking earlier about, you know, advertising a position.
Okay. You still alternate?
Yes.
Laura wasn't alternate.
So you're not included in form, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe, yeah, there still is, there has been ads that were placed seeking other applicants.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to the ARPA board approval, eligibility of funds, I believe we have the article here from, I believe, the cities and towns. I believe all we have to do, as other towns have done, is to tell them, yes, we'd like the money.
We just have to authorize the town manager to do that, correct?
Yep.
May the 15th of July.
And we need three motions here based on this document from the LCT?
Yeah, and it's the...
Let's put the same as the assigned.
Whoever we designate based on motion number two. I got this right? So I'm gonna move that the town of Castleton accept its allocation for coronavirus local fiscal recovery funding from the US Treasury along with the awards, along with the award terms and conditions and assurances of compliance with civil rights requirements that are requirements of accepting these funds.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Onto the manager's report.
No, we're not...
Oh, we have three-year, three-year.
Oh, you got another one, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint the town manager, Michael Jones, to serve as the town, village, cities authorized, as the town's authorized representative as required by the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funding from the US Treasury to sign the awards, terms and conditions and assurances of compliance with the civil rights requirements by July 15th, 2021.
And a second. Second. Any discussion of this, Joe?
According to this handout that we got in our packets, it says that the authorized representative needs to be the chair or other member of the governing bodies, which I would take to mean another select board member.
They'll say that. And then it'll be the contact person.
So Mike's gonna be, okay. So then I'm going to rescind that motion and make a motion that we appoint Jim Leeny for a chairman as the town's authorized representative as required by the, yada, yada, yada.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All but you, myself, for that one.
I will, I move that we name Michael Jones, town manager, to be the contact person for the town's C L R F R award for the US Treasury.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got them all there?
I think so. Okay, Mike. It's all you, buddy. Thank you for your diligence.
Moving on to the manager's report, we all have copies of the manager's report. If anyone has any questions for Mike regarding the manager's report. Dick?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mike regarding the manager's report?
We'll cut through, it's pretty clear.
Okay, Bob?
Just a question on the transfer station. Do we have a, a working roustabout that goes from department to department to department? Do we have?
Chris does.
Chris does?
Yeah.
Chris is already at the transfer station now?
He is the roustabout.
He's the roustabout.
So there's two positions at the transfer station, one's the operator and one's the roustabout. So Chris does most of his time at the highway garage when he's, those two days he's not there.
You know what I was getting at, or you knew where I was going with this, right?
I don't really, but...
Uh, well, well, obviously Joe's got a, he's got a haul on, sometimes haul on the days that are open, and that leaves the one person there, and then the big paragraph here says, it's okay to leave the one person there. But my recommendation was to have the roustabout go up there when Joe wasn't there. Obviously, he's not to be running the backhoe when he's up there by himself, that, that would be a...
We talked about that, not working on electrical or on the compactor, climbing a ladder, anything that OSHA would come in and slap you for anyway.
Okay.
So that's technique, right now he's been doing most of his time down at the highway garage. But Ed did have a conversation with Joe, right, when I, when I talked to Ed last week about if he needs Chris up there and there's a task that needs to get done, then don't just send him down to the garage, you know, say, call me and let me know you need him up there for a certain task. Rather than say, well, it didn't get done because I had to send him down to the garage. And so, he is, Ed just clarified with him saying, if you need him, just communicate with me and we can work it out.
Any help, Bob?
No. Okay. Mike?
Yeah, let's see, so, as you know, I brought it up to you, but you say that it's all, it's okay to have one person work by himself, but did you look into the union contract to see if the union employee can work by himself? Because I know when we did it, you cannot do that. And as far as the safety aspect of it, this town, I cannot believe that we're gonna let him work up there by himself, taking the chance that something could happen and he can't get to a phone, we're gonna be held responsible for him because there's not somebody else there. I think at any time, there gotta be two people there regardless, you don't, never know what's gonna happen. He could walk out, fall, and nobody sees him, and he can't get up. And we're gonna be responsible for that because nobody else is there with him. Um, and I just, and we had the issue last Saturday or the Saturday, the 4th of July, Saturday, Chris was there by himself with another kid, and that is really uncalled for and unnecessary. You have people coming in to get permits, the kid, the other kid cannot run the register, so Chris was trying to do that, do the scales and everything, you don't leave one person there by himself on a Saturday of all days, on a holiday, to work at the transfer station. I don't care who it is.
Okay, well, let me address them so I can, um, as far as the last one goes, I, I spoke to our supervisor about that, and they left it as, if you need help, I'm only a call away, just, I just live down the road, call me. So I talked to the operator about it, and he said, I just didn't call him. So he had an option to say, I'm, I'm up here and I need help, and he didn't make the call.
On the same token, he authorized the vacation, so he should have known if there's only gonna be one person there on a Saturday, he should have let somebody there.
Well, I asked him, I asked both of them, did anybody ask for help, and that knowing that someone was gonna be there, neither one of them did. As far as the working alone stuff, we have people that operate graders by themselves and dump trucks, and so, I don't personally see it as a, as a, as a problem unless there's, like I said, on a really busy day, obviously I agree that we should have help up there, but as far as the day-to-day stuff, as long as we're staying away from dangerous activity, dangerous, what I mean by OSHA compliant stuff, like playing electricity, playing around the compactor, working heavy equipment, but, but our, our highway crew was out and operates all this stuff by themselves on back roads. So if I take the same argument, it's, we just don't have the, we just don't have the staff to always have two people. As far as the union contract goes, it says they can't have, when they're running chainsaws and this stuff like that, they have to have two people, but it's really, it's chainsaw and one or other thing. So, that, like that answers the question about the contract. I can send you a copy, Mike, if you want.
Question. Okay, Mike? Kenny, Joe?
All set.
I'm all set.
I missed one thing, Joe.
Bob?
Okay. Can you, can you touch on the permits, hey, Mike?
Which page are you on?
Um, no, it's, uh, page six, last page.
On the public concern?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. I don't, yeah, it hasn't been resolved. This individual was giving our, both Chris and Joe a hard time up at the, the transfer station itself about permits. So, it was explained to me by, by Joe that this person doesn't even live in Hubbard or Castleton. So I called Hubbard and town office and talked to Don. I got the information of the vehicles and the names of who they're registered to. I have the police run the plate, and they don't even live in Hubbard or Castle, they live in Sudery. And that's, that's what our, our employees were saying, they said, don't live in here in town, why are they getting a permit? So, I mean, my son lives in Clarendon. If he used my house as his address and got a permit, the waste is not generated in the town of Castle or the town of Hubbardon, so technically I would be scamming the town. So if they are trying to use the mother's address in Hubbardon, Barbara, I think is her name, if I remember correctly, um, then, and they don't live in Hubbardon or Castleton, they're generating the trash from outside of that, then it goes against our policy.
I, I, it does go against our policy, I understand that, but we all know that how the town trash is coming into our transfer station on a regular basis, and we don't really throw a fit about that. And as far as we know, all the people live up around the lake, they come up for the weekend, how do you know they're not bringing their trash from Kipsey or New York City or wherever else they are? I mean, to throw a fit over one person bringing a couple bags a couple weeks out here, I, I just don't see the purpose of...
Well, I'm not throwing, I just, you know, I'm not throwing a fit.
No, no.
They came to me saying this person was very rude to them.
Yeah, that's not...
And was, was screaming at them at the transfer station.
That's unfair.
So...
I don't condone that, I just, I don't think we need to make a big issue over just one person's...
No, but the stick that she raised is why we're having this issue. She really got after them and screamed and almost threatened to punch Joe.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's BS, she doesn't even belong here.
And that'll just lead to more investigation to find out they, they don't even live here.
Joe?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, you know, it, it may be one thing if people behind our backs bring trash from their primary residence and dump it in Castleton. I'd be surprised about that, I would not wanna drive up from Schenectady with my home trash. But when it comes to our intention that there's a person who is, who is trying to, you know, violate our policies, I think we have to take a stand, either that or say, or take down the sign that says it has to be generated in the towns of Castleton or Hubbardon.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. We'll move on to the warrants, we have one warrant.
The purchase order?
The purchase order, I'm sorry. One purchase order.
I'll make a motion, we approve purchase order number 046971 to watch guard for two in-car camera systems for $9,790, $8,223.60, of which is covered by Grant.
Second. Add a second. Any discussion?
It was what two cars are they picking, the truth? I just, we have one or two...
That would be up to the chief. Probably the ones that have the older cameras in them, I would assume.
Oh, they're, they've already got cameras, this is just to replace them? Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, my understanding was this is one upgrade.
Okay.
If not, all those in favor of approving this purchase order, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now we move on to the warrants.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve purchase order number 0712R for $39,654.61. Warrant 0630R for $41,666.67. Warrant 0712 for $98,298.45. Warrant 0708 for $25,543.51. Warrant 0701 for $6,469.81. Warrant 0708 for $20,449.27. And warrant 0701P for $18,496.84.
Second. Add a second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We'll make a motion to approve number 0709P for $716, $716. And number 0702P for $694.37.
Second. Add a second.
I refuse myself.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
We make a motion, we approve number 0711 for $94.08. And number 0710P for $273.36.
Second. Add a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I refuse myself, that one.
I had a question. Eliza, did you get the, the one for the purchase order, you got who made the motion and stuff? Saying that, just wanna make sure.
Yes, I did. I have Dick made the motion and Joe seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, you, Bobby?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? Anybody got? Thank you. I think I got my agenda messed in there somewhere.
I'm excited, yeah.
We can share this one.
Okay, great.
That is mine, we'll share.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Means a lot to me. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? There's no spot leaving the end, but can I make a comment while you're still signing?
Yeah, sure.
This was a leftover from last meeting, just to correct the record for the gravel pit and the solar project, that during some meetings I, I made a statement saying that the annual lease payment would be $15,000 for 20 years, and that is inaccurate, it's actually $10,000 a year for 25 years, so I wanna make sure that was corrected on the record.
It's corrected.
And I also owe some letters, I haven't finished them, for the sailing program, for some donations, and for the boulanger, I just, I forgot about them, just gotta get them fit in there, so, just wanted to let the board know that.
My question I have is, how are we doing with the common area? Did that, the trailers get out of there now?
No, they're getting, I told Pete to have them pull you up there, well, I was up there with him on the 4th of July, and I still, go ahead and start, call, call R and D and have them start pulling. So I've been off since Thursday, so I don't know what's been done yet. But I will follow up and let you know.
Please. The houseboat's still up there?
I wasn't there on, on 4th of July.
Mike, do we have to do anything on this?
I can't see what is due.
Community development and economic violation, maybe we made changes? Are we supposed to do something on this?
Karen had the, the changes on, if that's in your packet?
Yeah.
Then that may, that maybe has the corrections, I don't know, I haven't been here to talk to her about it. But I gave her, after the last meeting, I gave her Joe's notes on, on that for correction.
Do you have a copy?
I don't have a copy of that. Well, that, that, I would assume if you have it in the packet, then it must have corrections. I don't know where it exactly... If it doesn't have them, then I don't know where it came from.
I would suggest that we let Joe review it.
Yeah.
If he's good to go and has the changes he suggested, then we can...
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up next meeting?
Yeah.
Right, so, the, the minutes reflected the change that I was hoping to see under membership, the terms of the residential members shall be two, two-year and one, one-year terms. I was hoping they would all be two-year terms, which is what all the other board members have terms.
Was that on your notes, Joe?
It was a...
Just a verbal?
A verbal at the time.
Okay. I'll, I will go back to the well on that one. That one has a recording, so if I'm going to use the recorder, we can... My note, I have notes as well, but I gave her yours.
We're also gonna take TV, we can... It was a valuable resource.
And just, Mr. Chairman, next meeting, you know, this one was a short one, but next one, just to let you know, we're gonna need a sewer commissioners meeting again for the budget, for the sewer budget, and also to set the tax rate, because the test of 26th of July, that only gives the front office folks and Mary Jo a few days to get that cranked out. And then there's a scope, that scoping study for Staso Road, there has to be a public meeting on that. So it's gonna be, and plus all the bids coming in, so I just wanted to let you know that next meeting is gonna be pretty, pretty heavy with agenda items.
Okay.
That'll be the 26th.
If that is on the 26th, is there anyone who would be interested in starting at 6:30?
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that.
No problem, Bob, could you?
I don't have a problem.
No, no problem?
6:30 for the, for the select board or for the sewer commission?
Sort of. And then the special meeting?
6:35.
6:45, whatever.
Okay. He said 35, but I don't worry, get going to that.
6:53.
What was the special meeting for?
The special meeting for the scoping study?
No, it can be part of the regular select board meeting, it just has to have a public meeting.
So it has to be an agenda?
Yeah, so it has to be in the agenda, okay. They just sent me a message today asking if we could do it on 26.
So why don't we warn the meeting for the select board meeting for 6:45, in the off chance the sewer meeting doesn't take very long, and they don't have to wait till 7:00 to start the select board meeting?
That's what I, that's what I hoped would happen.
Makes sense, Mike?
Sure, I mean, it's the sewer budget, and with the, I don't know how much you're gonna have for discussion on the sewer budget, but I will do what you ask, but I'm not sure how many questions will come out of the sewer budget, because you haven't seen it yet.
If it goes over two minutes, we at least have a goal.
We can't start the meeting, the select board meeting early, but we can start it late.
So 6:45, right?
Yeah, please. We got it.
6:30, 6:45. Any follow-up questions, comments? Seeing none, reason for an executive session, Mike?
Oh, no, oh, no, you skipped right past those.
What did I put, I...
I, I, I just wanted to, look in the other way, ask if at some point we can discuss the ARPA process. I think that, I mean, at the very least, we need to have a discussion among ourselves as to what opportunities and priorities we would have for the $436,000. But I think, uh, what I'm hearing and reading in the Robin Herald is that many communities are, are doing that, uh, either in a, you know, special open meeting or, you know, having some kind of community participation in the process. And I think that would be desirable.
Okay.
That's it for me.
That's it. Anything else?
Yeah, well, you go first, Bob. Okay. Mr. Holden, were you able to attend the Robin County Solace District meeting? Last Wednesday, you were not.
Well, I don't believe they have one right now, they said they were offered over a while, is what. What's his name?
So they didn't have one last, last Wednesday?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. You said a couple, three meetings ago that all a person had to do was go on the computer to get the financial numbers. Um, I assume you did that to get, answer my equal little question.
No, I did not, I had a chance to get on.
If you can't get on the computer, can you get your district manager to do that? Or Mr. Gilbert?
Yep. I thought I gave you the number, one number that you.
No, that's not the number I'm looking for, I'm looking for the total district surcharge charges collected in 2020.
Total?
Total district surcharge charges collected for the year 2020.
Perhaps prior to the next meeting, perhaps, um, you or Tim might be able to submit a report or a summary on what has been accomplished.
Okay.
At the, I'm sure if we haven't got back, you can read it.
Mr. Chairman, um, I had read something here recently, um, Tim is supposed to do a quarterly meeting to the select board, tend to.
What I was waiting for.
Actually, our district rep is supposed to do that, but whatever.
Let me ask this question.
Yeah.
So Mike, as far as you know, have we been represented at, at every meeting of the Robin County Solace District?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
I just gotta, I missed the last meeting, so I just wanna know who, I assume all four of you, if that's what the minutes said, but who voted in favor of paving Corey Lane, Eagles Nest, Woodard Way, North and South, Woodard Way? All four of you? Okay, I'm asking the question to all four of you, and on whose recommendation did we do to do that?
The, um, director of public works and the town manager.
What were the reasons to pave those particular roads?
Because I believe they would be ready for it without having to do additional order.
And, and they're high, that they're one of our, those are our hard maintenance roads that have problems that we spend a lot of time grading and taking potholes out of.
Actually, that was decided by the board, and you may or may not have been there, Bob, I don't recall that, on the, uh, meeting we had on June 7th and then the meeting on June 21st is when we actually wore the contract. But the deciding what contract it was, what should, which roads we were gonna do was done in the meeting prior to that. I remember discussing that and making the decision to go with Corey Lane and associated roads. I was at those meetings, I don't recall. Prior meeting, I don't recall exactly which meeting. Does that sound reasonable, anybody else remember that?
Yeah, that's what I recall.
At the last meeting in June, we were all confused as, because we got different prices and different measurements. So the next meeting that I missed, so it wasn't the last meeting, it was the first meeting in June. The next meeting that I missed, the last meeting in June, you guys decided then what roads you were gonna do. I'm pretty sure of that, so.
The meeting prior to the board directed, that chose the roads to get the bids back on and those were part of it. So that's why I went back out and we.
First meeting in June?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll go back through the minutes and figure out which meeting that occurred in. Okay.
Any other, call it, follow-up or comments?
Just, just wanna know when we're actually gonna open up these meetings to the general public.
Open now.
Well, according to the agenda, it's not really physical, you know.
They're right now.
Okay, well, it says you can join if you're joining Zoom or by Zoom.
That was to, I believe that was to make sure that some people, if they wanted to use that, could use them. But that's why the chairs are in the back of the room.
Okay.
Any other?
My turn?
Yeah.
Select work comments? I don't do this very well. Two things, um, thing one, has there been any resolution as to what's going to happen to the money? This, this, all the DARPA funds that are going to Rutland County? Has that been resolved yet? Is that gonna be divvied up among the towns or is the county government that doesn't exist gonna try to hang on to that?
The last stuff that was put out, the last word I got, uh, put out by VLCT, um, it was that the Treasury Department has kinda overruled what the legislators and VLCT was saying and that, uh, they're still gonna send it to the counties, even though Vermont doesn't really have a county form of government. Um, the Treasury Department, um, said it's still gonna go to the counties.
Really? And when you say the Treasury Department, you're talking about Vermont Department of Treasury?
I believe it's the US Department of Treasury. Um, it's, it was in a VLCT article, I, I can, I'll forward it to you guys.
That sounds crazy.
Yeah, it was, uh, it said that even though, even though that Vermont doesn't have a form of, a county form of government, that the Department of Treasury said that it would still go to the counties, uh, for dissemination, a further dissemination.
It's almost like the bridge to Dover.
Yeah. But I met the, uh, I, I met a side judge who was arguing that whole, um, he worked for the county, obviously, and said, um, yeah, once you, once it goes there, you never see all of it. And that was a concern, that it doesn't always, after it goes through its washing machine cycle, that it, what was there originally doesn't, I'll make it back to the municipalities, which was the spirit of what this was supposed to be about.
What is the VLCT position on it?
VLCT and legislators were working, fighting to make sure it didn't go to the, um, counties, that it went directly to the municipalities.
I would hope that Senator Leahy could have some considerable influence over that process.
There's also two or three other states, if my understanding is, don't have any significant foreign states?
For these, uh, county governments.
So where do they send the money if we don't have a county government to send it?
Well, it will go to the county, Rutland County, but there is no county, it's not like New York where there's a county legislature.
It runs through the sheriff's department.
So they divvied up?
You can find it down between the cushions of your couch.
The sheriff's department and the county, and the courts, maybe, I don't know.
But it was, it was still, still supposed to have been sent, uh, using the same numbers, the, uh, census data to, to disseminate and that doesn't seem to, I'm not sure if that's gonna be true or not from reading that article, but I'll, I'll send you guys the articles.
I, I bring this up mainly to get it in the minutes and to make sure that our town population is aware that there's some other funding out there that may or may not wind up in Castleton, Brandon, Benson, Fairhaven, et cetera, where it belongs.
May or may not. Elliot.
That's, in its entirety, I guess.
My other, one more thing.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
One more thing, um, the, the, um, I was unable to find the minutes for the DRV meeting on the venue in, on Rice Willis Road, so I have no idea what the resolution of the DRV was on that entertainment venue on, on Rice Willis. So, um, you make sure those minutes are available?
I am, not sure if you took those or not, but.
I, I live on Rice Willis.
Cedar Meadows?
Cedar Meadows, that was the.
Don't recall that, I don't think I was at that one.
14th was the date of the DRV meeting?
I will.
Jonas was working on minutes, on those minutes. I believe it was those minutes.
Is there anything you can tell me verbally about what was decided?
I don't, I, I know that the question that, going into the meeting was whether or not they had to reapply or they were gonna honor that old permit. Um, and I saw email traffic going back and forth, but I did not attend the meeting and I hadn't heard.
So it was another event this past weekend, but it was nowhere near as loud.
Right. Oh, so we're holding events on Rice Willis Road right now?
The first, the one that was a month or so ago was quite loud and, uh, let's say it was not necessarily family-friendly, the language. I could hear, understand the words clearly at my house.
They, they closed this one down, they shut down earlier this time and, um, and I talked to the neighbor who made one of the complaints and said it was, certainly wasn't as loud as it was last time and they shut down early, uh, instead of 11 o'clock, it was something, they didn't shut down until, they closed down.
I heard it the other night, Saturday night, but it wasn't anywhere near as loud and I could just barely hear that something was going on.
Mike, isn't it a fair question to ask Jonas if the DRV has made a decision? I think that's questionable as to whether they've made a decision.
And if so, what it is?
Yeah.
And just a generic comment, the last DRV minutes posted on March 16th?
Um, I, and I think that the board should be aware of that, there's several boards or commissions or committees that aren't posting minutes. And I know that with the DRV and the planning commission, if decisions are made and no one can go back and find, the public can't find these, um, these decisions, that we can get in a pretty good jam.
Okay.
So.
Anything else, Dick?
I'm done.
You're done? I just asked a question about that. Do they hold them every Saturday night or they pick and choose or?
I've only heard of two and I only heard two so far, I have no idea what their schedule, if there is one.
They have a summer schedule out there, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Anything else, Dick? Bob?
No.
Mike?
Joe?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, too.
I will say that the, the, the performance a month or so ago was pretty descriptive about adult activities that you wouldn't want your kids to hear about. And I could understand the words at my house.
Okay.
I will adjourn.
Oh, I think we got an executive session.
Oh, excuse me.
On personnel. If you wanted to adjourn, that's okay, Joe.
I'm just joking, I'll let Joe do it.
I was prepared to second that one.
I saw it as well, I was going to, but I didn't.
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session with the town manager at, um, 7:47?
For personnel?
For personnel.
Second.
Is their motion?
I'm so moved.
He's so moved, you second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bring an executive session.